The position agreement, the LDA. For these three lots should be approved because the city previously agreed to an LDA for lots one and 11, and they already had a deal. However, that agreement was made on October 12, 2015. Seven years have passed, seven years since then, and they haven't complied with the original LDA. Now they want to come back, change everything, plus for lot 15, add in a city financed and maintained parking garage. That's a little minor, huh? Plus, take advantage of all the tax incentives the city added since then. This agreement even admits that much. Quote, "The developers have agreed to amend the original LDA in its entirety." I bet. Mike tried to look up the original resolution of the defaulted agreement, but it was not on the website. We wonder, is prior agreement null or void? It's not, we can't find the original agreement from 2015. Which I'm not interested in. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Lynn Bratton.
Hello, everybody. I wrote "good afternoon" when I wrote this. I believe it's "good evening." Thank you, I don't want to take away my minutes. My name is Lynn Bratton. I have been a resident of the Camden neighborhood since 1973, almost as long as Mr. Taylor. I live at 303 South Boulevard, and in addition to being a retired member of the education community of 37 years, I am still the owner and manager of two rental companies that I started in 1982. I started those with my own little teeny tiny little bit of inheritance from my grandmother, who grew up in Westover, so she didn't have much. And that money, I invested in my first house, which I did not resell until about five years ago. So I buy and I keep. And I buy at mortgage rates that were as much as 13 to 15 percent for a commercial loan back then. And every dime was paid out of my money, not from any giveaway program, not from any donated anything at all. And I never ever got either bit of an aha for taking a property that was boarded up across from Vine Street with sticks in the front yard, or another one that had boarded up windows and took them out of cutting the grass and getting people living in them. Not once did I get anything from the city of Salisbury, except letters about some of the building materials that I didn't move quick enough. Not once did I get a thank you from anybody for putting housing back in the hands of people that could afford it. Talk about housing shortage, go back to when we went from four to two. I have houses that have four beautiful bedrooms, multiple bathrooms. I have single people that would love to share apartments. You can't do it. You can only put two unrelated people per house. Even if I have six, I have a house that has six bedrooms. Fortunately, I got a grandfather, so I can put four college students in there, two full bathrooms, six bedrooms, plenty of off-street parking, four people is it. Four people. Now I can put a big family, but I can only put four individual college students, or four individual nursing students, or four individual people that work a blue collar job. But if you share the rent and you share the utilities four ways, it becomes affordable. Trying to do it two ways, it's high. It is high. And then the taxes go up, and the water bills go up, and if, again, if they could help, you know, the rents have to pay. And my people are good people. I haven't had a vacancy in three years, four years. My folks stay put. People don't want to move. I don't kick them out. I work with a man. We work payments, we do grant opportunities. I, the lady, I'm sad for her. But I pay a maintenance company to spray my bugs every month in my multifamily homes. Every month, I have Bennett go in and spray for the roaches and the bugs. And if you show up with bedbugs, well, guess what? The odds are, I'm going to pay the $1,200 to get them gone. Excuse my language, because the neighbors need to have, they can't have the bedbugs going into their apartment. And I know you didn't do it on purpose, because you probably bought something cheap from some hand-me-down place and it came with the bedbugs, because bedbugs mobilize. Let me go back to my statements here. In recent years, I have sold a number of my units. I was up to over 40 at one point, just little old me, with no company except my two corporations that I formed. In recent years, I've sold them to homeowners, and I share with them my excitement that they are joining a vibrant, exciting community. I was so excited to put homeowners into homes that had been rentals, so they're going to revitalize their own little piece of the world, cut their grass, plant some flowers, hang some potted plants on their porches. Recently, we have seen the sale of city-owned properties with the explanation that they were deemed surplus and placed on the market. These properties, as far as I could tell, were not listed with the local MLS, contrary to what our friend at the end of the table said earlier. And unless you had knowledge that they were available for the few weeks that they were available, you missed it. It was missed by local investors, including myself. Do you think I would, I mean, $10,000 for that lot across from Ugly Pie and that place? $10,001 for all that space over there. That's all the city sold it for. That's a done deal. $75,000 for the flea market. Flea market's been there for 21 years. I have people that used it for Christmas presents. They made extra little bit of chump change. They could walk there. They don't have cars, they can't get to Walmart to buy something. And it was affordable, folks, and we gave it away. And now, my daughter, my little granddaughter takes dance lessons across from lot 10, whatever that lot is. She's going to be coming out with her mama, y'all talk about the senior citizens, she's going to be coming out with her mama in the dark after her dance lessons, and instead of just walking across the street where they normally went, because there was no more court, you know, they could just do it, they're going to have to walk all the way down the street, all the way around to the parking garage with a six-year-old in the dark, and the daddy's home with the other daughter who's at a karate class at the civic center, divide and conquer. I mean, those things are important, and again, senior citizens, I love y'all, I'm one of them, but we got to think about all of us. A six-year-old and a 40-year-old, these are people that can still mobilize, but they shouldn't have to be walking around in the dark, wondering what's behind a corner, or who's in an alley, or holding on to the child like this. Come on, folks, help me out here. Currently, we are here tonight to look at the sale of lots 1, 11, and 15. These lots comprise the most convenient and easily accessible lots in the downtown area that are left. Places like the library, the church, the church, we got a church downtown, the government office building, the city offices, and the firehouse, the restaurants, the shops, the beauty salons, the festivals, the cultural events. The sale of a number of vital resources has already occurred and have already been ratified and completed, at a loss of millions in base pricing. I don't know that we're any independent appraisals done to establish a fair market value on all these. I was married to an appraiser for years, so I kind of know that routine. And the potential revenues, city hook-up fees, tax abatements for as long as 20 years. Others have delineated the gross effect and loss of parking marked by the scale, sales of these properties, so I won't reiterate that. But I will state for the record that as a member of the community, walking from the garage to a restaurant at the end of the plaza is not enticement for me to come back down here and spend my money. As a person who attends the Friday events, the cultural celebrations, the community gatherings, the parking is a huge consideration. The Hispanic festival, last weekend's festival, the things that are going to come on next weekend, where are these people going to park? Did you look at the parking lot during the Hispanic festival? There was no parking in that lot. And it was fabulous. If you didn't come, you need to come next year, maybe if you saw this.
Thank you, Lynn, if you could wrap up.
All right, I'm going. If a metro transportation system has been developed, as was suggested in the master plan from 2010, these discussions would be important, but the scope of the need would maybe less. In the 2010 master plan, the only one I can find, much was discussed concerning parking at that time before any parking lots were sold. And even in that report, it states that parking is manageable, but only if the program can effectively redistribute parking demand from one lot to another. And further in the report, it stated that more parking would be needed. Again, this was before any of the lots were even sold. So redistributing parking was no longer an option if the sales were ratified. Additionally, in the 2010 master plan, and I quote, "New development, both inside and outside of current city limits, must also support the cost of new growth. Impact fees are one-time payments used to construct systems, improvements needed to accommodate new development. An impact fee represents new growth's fair share of capital facility needs. Should this sale occur, developers are not paying the impact fees. In fact, the developer of lot one has a requirement that we build a parking garage. Please vote to change this ordinance resolution for further discussion. The full impact of this on our community has not been identified, and the sale of this property will forever and ever change the success of the downtown revitalization effort." I would have quoted data from the current master plan, but I can't find it, and I'm only going on the one that was signed off by Mayor Jim Iertin for this report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lynn. Next is Colton Comstock.
Yes, good evening. I'm a frequent patron here downtown in Salisbury. And having observed quite a bit this evening what people have had to say, what I would say is that taking these parking lots, I fail to see how it benefits the general public, which is, should be the basis for any of the sorts of discussions, by taking these lots and putting a new, putting a development in. I don't see what the benefit is to that. It's been brought up, the discussion of affordable housing, and that's a very compelling argument to have, and I would agree with that. But what assurances this council, my question is, what assurances does this council give into anyone that this new development is going to be for affordable housing? You know, we listened to the mayor earlier this evening, Mr. Mayor, and said that, he spoke to a girl earlier this week who said that she had a contract and she couldn't afford to live where she was living. Well, I would say, Mr. Mayor, you should ask her to take a look at the Ross building that was put up. It's been brought up, this discussion about supply and demand. Well, someone has a degree in economics, it's not as simple as just supply and demand. There's more nuance, there's more factors that go into that that's just simply being discussed. If you want to talk about assurances to give to make sure that this is affordable housing, let this council discuss things about rent control. Things like that that would actually have a real impact on ensuring that this is affordable housing, that would indeed go up. We don't have that at this time. It's been brought up about transparency this evening. I haven't seen a whole lot of that that's been mentioned with this sort of thing. So I think that this council, I would urge them to delay the vote on this. Conduct public opinion polls. As mentioned, I'd like this to do a referendum in the fall. Do that. Don't vote on this this evening and give a developer that's embedded politically with members of this council the right to take over parking lots and construct a property.
Next is Randy Taylor. Thank you.
Yeah, I've kind of come with a little bit of a unique situation. I'm a landlord as well, and I've lived in the city for 25 years. I own a building downtown, the Parker Place Building, which you guys may have always brought up earlier this evening. And I've had the unique distinction of buying lots from the city. And Shani, you may remember this, but when I went through the process, it was like a three-year process. And I not only had to provide an overlay drawing, I had to provide, you know, a list of what I was going to sell and how we were going to sell it. We were in business down there for 17 years roughly, and it was a process. And we didn't just make an offer and they accepted it. We had not just one, but two appraisals. I ended up paying twice what I initially made an offer to the city, because it was all done in public, in the public way. You know, we had conversations and it went, I don't know how many meetings, I was trying to find the file, and I'm going to think, and it was probably under P for PTSD, because it stressed me out. And it was, you know, fine, it ended up, what I'm saying, I guess, is that I did not know any about, anything about the status of this development. And I say "status," apparently, they'd gone before historic district last month, which I wasn't even aware of. My partner let me know, "Oh, I didn't make you aware," or whatever. Well, and now we're talking about resolution with not a lot of information. I've not seen an overlay drawing, how it's going to border my property, or that they're going to acknowledge that there's a paper alley next to my property. Am I going to get, they're going to build up over me? I have no idea what we're looking. So you guys are acting in the city's best interest, but you're impacting me as an owner. And I think, not only just me, but a bunch of people in this, you know, Market Street, I mean, a bunch that are going to be impacted. Now, listen, I'm a former banker, and I'm not for anti-development. These guys are friends of mine, you know, I like to think of them as my friends. But at the end of the day, we got one time to do this right, and I think we're pointed in the direction of doing it absolutely wrong. It takes, it requires urban planning, not just a stolen drawing from another town and try to make it work with our current architecture, with no overlay drawings, no impact. And for that matter, when a private citizen comes and says, "Wait a minute, we're going to be 1,000 spaces short." That's true or not, I don't know. But we should have been doing that math six months ago, a year ago. How this overlay development is going to impact the net parking that we're going to need to properly service what they want. And I, hey, that's not, I'm for development downtown, you know? I want to develop my building at some point, at some point, but to be perfectly frank with you, it's this kind of stuff that makes me a little bit nervous. I go up six or seven or eight hundred grand into a building, and this kind of shit happens? It's a problem. It's a real, not necessarily for these guys, but it's a problem for me. You know what I mean? And I'm not saying that as a negative, I'm just saying as an honest conversation as a taxpayer, who's been here his entire adult life since he came back from DC. I'm a city guy. I want to see the downtown. But you guys do not have enough information to vote on that resolution. Period, new paragraph, okay? And again, I'm not saying this as a criticism to, I want to see these guys develop. I want to see the downtown develop. Maybe in some version of what they've got going, but we don't have enough information to see if that's a good thing or not. I mean, from what I understand, they got approved vinyl siding, which again, you know, at least we could do hearted plank and do some sort of mixed use. Sounds like we're doing residential to the ground level. I don't think that's commensurate with what we've got downtown. And it's certainly not going to be affordable, let's be honest. It's not going to be affordable, regardless of the tax abatements or tax whatever. But all I'm saying is, I came here tonight, I was surprised we were at the level we were, because as an owner contiguous to all of this, I was never aware. So if you think you guys are doing this in plain sight, you have missed the mark, big time. And I don't say that as a criticism, I say that as an absolute observation. You don't have enough information, okay? And I think it's going to, I think this is the wrong way to go about it. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Next is John in Charlotte Site.
Safe left.
Next, I have Charmaine Bolden.
Good evening. I don't have to stand up. Stand up.
You're fine.
Okay, so first I wanted to say that I was born and raised in Worcester County, and I could have moved anywhere, but I chose to move to Wycomical County. And the reason why I chose to move here is because I wanted to downtown live. I've been here for six years now, in the same apartment complex on the corner, by the light, when we first come onto the plaza, and I love it here. I'm all for the revitalization, but at the same time, it brings a lot of concern to me as far as the parking. Parking was definitely one of the reasons why I chose the area that I stayed in, because the lot was right across the street from my building, so it wasn't that far to walk. But now, with the revitalization going on, that parking being gone, and then I also convinced my mom to sell her house in Worcester County and come move with me after you retire. Now we're dealing with this. So it's like, dang, I should have let her stay where she was at. So it's like, it's very emotional for me, because again, it's going to be a struggle for her. I'm good, I'm 48, I can move around, but she's not. So I would just say, please consider, please consider, the people that are already living here, not the ones that will be moving here, that's going to be, as you students, they're not here all year round, don't they hear during the semester, they go home during the summertime. They don't have to deal with what we're going to have to deal with. You have to consider the people that live here on the plaza. A lot of stuff I'm hearing I didn't know. 22,000 more residents, if I'm saying that right, 2,200? I'm out. I love it like it is now, it's peaceful. I don't want to be in all of that. That's not why I moved here. Downtown, it has, I like it, because I like the ambiance, I like my apartment, how it was made, all that, that's neat. But to have to share my space with 2,200 more people that you're bringing in here, it's going to be congested. Downtown is not that big. How long does it stretch? It's not that big.
Like three blocks.
Yeah, so just consider us that are here, that live here. And again, I've been here for six years. I was planning on staying for as long as I could, as long as Holly allowed, because Holly is my landlord, she's gone, but as long as she allowed me, I was going to be here. But now, I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Nick Simpson.
I'm thinking I'll go last in the hallway, so it's good. When I'm with Menace Capital, I think my firm is, well, my firm is actually investing, trying to put about $100 million into downtown. So I think I have a unique perspective on, you know, redevelopments that happen in downtown Salisbury. And there are not many investors, yeah, there are not many investors who are currently interested in making large, significant investments in downtown without having some kind of plan to move this forward. So nevertheless, I think it's amazing that this many people are excited and passionate about downtown. It shows that we need to get this right and do it effectively. So first and foremost, I strongly believe that redeveloping chronically underutilized parking lots in downtown is really critical to creating a vibrant, and sustainable, and people-centered urban space. These public parking lots are consistently underutilized on a day-to-day basis. They're constant parking spots available in downtown, and they do not contribute tax revenue to the city, county, or state. By encouraging new development, we can generate jobs, opportunities, increase the tax revenue, and most importantly, transform the center of our community into the economic hub and a better place to live. So I want to applaud the local leaders that are current and before, and their forward-thinking approach to implementing groundbreaking legislation such as Horizon and Hearsome. These incentives have already resulted in private development worth tens of millions of dollars in downtown, and I encourage them, I encourage the current leaders to maintain these current incentives so that the rest of the development in downtown can move forward. By doing so, we can continue to stimulate the economy, attract new investments, and ensure a long-term revenue generation for the community. In fact, these lots have always been intended to be temporary. They were purchased by the city to be temporary, and redeveloped. And by taking the bulk, I was quiet while people were saying things about me. So I'm proud to see that the current and previous administrations are taking these actions to move this forward. Furthermore, it is essential to remember that investors have the freedom to put their money anywhere. Therefore, it is critical for Salisbury to be as appealing as possible, since we are a tertiary market. As an active developer, I promise you, banks and private equity groups are intrigued by the process happening, or the progress happening in Salisbury. However, they are hesitant to put substantial investments on the line without competitive returns. We have to be competitive to other areas. So even with the current incentives, it remains challenging to proceed with new developments in this market. Lastly, I would like to address some concerns and rumors that have been circulating. One, the Horizon program. This does not eliminate existing tax revenues. The existing tax revenues stay in place, it's only on future tax revenues from investing tens of millions of dollars. During the construction of the Ross, we talked about this before, we average 150 people working every day. The additional projects in downtown will employ hundreds of more people, and will have a huge ripple effect on our local economy. Developers are dedicated and spend a considerable amount of time in planning. See, an architect in the room. We don't just wing these things. We look at our feasibility studies, we want to hear impact, we want to figure out the best way to make sure that our developments work, and parking is one of those things. Keep in mind, the mall has five times the required parking that it needs to survive, and it is slowly dying. Excessive amounts of parking is not good urban design, and it does not make for a successful development. I am proud of the progress the city has made, and I am eagerly anticipating the full revitalization of our downtown, and I greatly appreciate the strong leadership of the folks that have made this happen. As far as the Ross, I've heard this multiple times, that it's not affordable. Our rents include electric, water, utilities, internet, and furniture. So when you individually rent this to a student, it is quite competitive with what is in the market. The other side is that we're not going to finish the project. As patently falls, we will be opening on August 1st. And we look forward to welcoming future residents later that month, about August 20th. So best of luck, and we'll see you guys moving forward.
Thank you, Nick. Next, I have Thomas Becker.
Hi, I'm Tom Becker. I am a citizen here, I've only been here for 40 years, so I'm not local yet. My term, I have served as president of Chamber of Commerce, 14 years on the Planning and Zoning Commission, president of the Greater Salisbury Committee, and one of my most proud achievements has been president of the Urban Salisbury Group. And the Urban Salisbury Group, for years and years and years, with Mr. Cooper's blessing, has always been pushing for development in downtown. What you see before you is probably the finest thing we have seen over what I'll recall 30 years of being personally out there trying to find a developer to come here and invest in our community. It's not easy to get a developer to come here, as Nick has simply explained, the market here is not that strong to be able to have the kind of expensive, expensive housing that is needed to support this kind of structure that they want to build. So this person is not really responsible for trying to provide affordable housing. That should be a responsibility of this county in other areas, not as the subject of this hearing. This hearing is only adding what we've always suggested, what is in the comprehensive plan, and if you all go look at the zoning, it's totally allowed in that downtown. Numerous times, it repeats over and over in the current planning and in the past master plans, written master plans, comprehensive plan, whatever you want to call it. Numerous times, it asks for greater density in downtown and reasonable amounts of density. This project is not that unreasonable. And if we don't at least accept this project and try to get a piece of the tax pie now, we'll never get it. And if you think your taxes are going to go up this year, you wait until we don't have development downtown to have the size of the Ross building, and then the size of what Gillis Gilberson is providing. So I think it's essential that we allow these projects to go forward, so we can tax the hell out of them as they come online. And that's what this is all about. It's a business deal. We need to keep coming up with new ways to have taxes, or else we're going to pay for it. And on the question of the parking garage, that's going to be funded by a bond, which will be supported by the tenants paying for it, just like a parking fee. Thank you.
Next, we have Von Siggers, former Salisbury City Councilperson.
Yeah, I did not come with the intent to make any comments, but I'd like to say, detail to most of what has been said, Mr. Becker, with fond regards, I disagree with you and the gentleman that spoke before you, and I don't see that this is going to build our tax base, unfortunately, because everything's been given away. There is nothing to force to build. By the time we start to recoup, we will have suffered consequences. This may be physical, it may take up space, but it won't bring about what we need to sustain our community. I don't believe it. I would hope that the council would have the trust in the community to put this on a referendum, so that the public can choose to have this to go forward. So what I'm hearing, most of the public is not supportive of it. I actually think it's a ridiculous idea, most of it.
Next, I have Michael Sullivan.
Thank you, Sullivan. Hello, my name's Michael Sullivan. I live in Wycomical County. You're probably all wondering why I'm here. No, seriously, why am I here? Did I want to invite you all to a discussion about redevelopment of downtown? No. In fact, the reason why I'm here requires us to look backwards, to look back into the past, something that was done quite a bunch already today. And I look back to 2015. 2015 is when the city issued an RFP for redevelopment of lots one and lot 11, which were unanimously declared surplus by the city council of the city of Salisbury. In 2015, that council unanimously awarded the bid for the redevelopment of lots one and 11 to Devrecio LLC. And then, they entered into a disposition agreement dated October 30th, 2015. Now, as Nick indicated, when you're dealing with a project that's most likely going to cost developers somewhere between $65 million and $70 million to construct, that takes time, indeed. The reason why the project was chosen was because it exactly reflected the requests that had been made by the city for bids for redevelopment. It reflected the city's vision for that use, the city at that time, the city council at that time. that time awarded that bid. And then the city and the developer entered into negotiations, which then resulted in a land disposition agreement dated in 2015. And when dealing with a development that is this large, that will generationally transform the southern entrance of downtown Salisbury, it can't be done in one night. In fact, the notion that we're going too fast here is not supported by the fact that we originally engaged in this discussion in 2015, all of which was published, all of which was the subject of notices and advertisements. And what I do think is interesting and worthwhile of note is that in 2021, the U.S. Census said that the city's population was roughly over 32,000 individuals. We are all passionate about the city that we love. I, like many of you, have lived here virtually all of my life, and I look at downtown's redevelopment, and it inspires me. Because what I don't want to have happen is my daughter, who's six, my other daughter, who's four, stand here tonight and ask you to approve a project that will change downtown Salisbury for the better. In fact, the city council already agreed. And then that disposition agreement led us through many negotiations, many different site plans, ultimately to the point of determining that this was going to be quite an extensive project when it came to financial investment. And that led to an addendum that was executed on October 31st, 2018. Something else happened on October 31st, 2018. Settlement occurred. That settlement includes a charge to developer for an owner's policy, title insurance. Sidell, Baker, and Tillman issued an owner's policy, or at least developer paid for one, with respect to the ownership of Lot 1 and Lot 11 it was deemed. Thereafter, discussions continued about the plans for this project, and interestingly, like the ROSS, it can be counterintuitive, but sometimes projects of this importance, of this scale, of this generational importance require... Are you finished?
Are you?
No.
Let's have some respect for the speaker, please.
Can you ask a question? I answer you.
Is it four minutes? Well, I did allow other people to finish their thoughts and their things way over four minutes. Some went eight, some went nine, so I would allow Mr. Sullivan in that respect as well.
Then in November of 2021, the City of Salisbury issued an RFP that had been awarded unanimously. Ms. Jackson seconded, awarding the bid for Lot 15 to Salisbury Town Center LLC. And Salisbury Town Center LLC is comprised of Devrecy LLC and a partner, Lakin LLC, which builds apartments across the bridge. You can look them up. And they are partnering with Devrecy so that we can actually develop a project of this size, which is exactly what the city wanted, which is exactly why we're here right now. We're not here right now because we came up with our own plans, with our own vision. Instead, no. An RFP was issued and a response was delivered, and that response was intended to match the request of the city for the redevelopment of its parking lot, which the city council had unanimously determined was surplus property, no longer needed for public use. If there is disagreement about that decision, that's okay, but it was made, and we've acted in reliance on that decision. And soon thereafter, in, I'm doing this by memory, February 14th of 2022, the city council unanimously awarded the bid for Lot 15, providing the price and terms that we're all aware, which were price and terms that responded to this. Lot 15 was not the subject of an RFP. The city voted to, when it declared it as surplus, the city authorized the Department of Procurement to list it for market sale and to collect offers during a certain window of time. During that window of time, the City of Salisbury received one offer. It was for $50,000. And that offer came with an LOI dated January 5th, 2002, that was accepted by the city, and it says, "Settlement on Lot 15 shall occur simultaneously with settlement on Lot 1 and 11." But closing it already occurred. City said, "We'll do them together." On January 14th of 2000, no, excuse me, January 10th of 2023, I received an email. It was the first initial draft of the lot disposition agreement, which is extensive. These are not easy to write. The notion that this was rushed is beguiled by the point that it began seven years ago. And I'll finish very quickly, because I know you guys have been here for a while, and as someone who's also had to sit in these meetings for a long time, I understand that most of my words are not going through. That's fine. However, that LOI was accepted at the February 14th, 2022 meeting, and there's something critically important about February 14th, 2002, because something else was approved unanimously by the city council. The city council approved unanimously the resolution approving, excuse me, approving the capital improvement program budget, which specified only one item with respect to capital improvement projects associated with parking. And that was a new parking garage to be located on portions of what is commonly known as Lot 1 right now. And it says there in a term, you can still find it on the internet, priced $10.7 million. And it would be funded by non-taxable bonds. And there's a really important component of non-taxable bonds that Lindsey Rader could certainly opine about much more intelligently than I, but I'll do my best. It goes like this. For non-taxable bonds, the parking garage has to be used exclusively for public use. There can be no preferential treatment. And here's where I will issue a mega call. In April, during the months of negotiation with respect to this LDA, in which developer was working closely with the City of Salisbury, so closely that we were exchanging plans, designs, schematics, overlays, there was a parking facilities agreement, exactly identical to the parking facilities agreement the City of Salisbury passed in August of 2020, yes, August of 2020, for the ROSS. However, Lindsey Rader contacted me, Lindsey Rader, for those information, she is buying counsel for the City of Salisbury. Lindsey Rader contacted me in April to inform me that because the garage is planned to be funded by non-taxable bonds, there could be no preferential provisions for developer. There could be no preferential provisions for its tenants. Instead, with respect to non-taxable bonds, they are repaid, are subsidized by user fees. Everyone who parks in the City of Salisbury, yours truly, I confess, I would gladly accept annexation, but apparently my neighbors don't want it, okay? I park downtown Salisbury. I pay for parking. So will each and every person that parks at the downtown parking garage, and that's why we're here today. Because when I received the first draft of the LDA following the award of bid, February 14th of 22, when I received the first draft of that initial agreement, January 10th of 2023, I identified the city had conveyed too much property. The city had accidentally conveyed all of Lot 1 to developer. I raised my hand and said, "No, you guys gave too much. If you want an area within Lot 1 to construct the parking garage for which you've already approved in your capital improvement plan adopted on February 14th of 2022, you'll need area within Lot 1." And I can't just say it goes from there to there to there to there. It needs to be resubdivided. And that's why we're here tonight, because the property needed to get resubdivided, because each and every one of these discussions has already been had. In fact, at every turn, it's been approved unanimously by people I love and respect, unanimously. And I'm at a loss right now, wondering, all of the money that we've spent to plan, design, to get to a point where we can submit a site plan in 60 days, and finally with this. We have set, I heard a comment about us paying for the design costs. That is substantial. We arranged for weekly teleconferences between city officials and developers' architect for the last eight, nine weeks on our dime, on our dime, on guys that are across the bridges dime.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Appreciate it. All right, that's, is there any more public comments? We got someone.
I would just say one thing.
We've got public comments online that are coming.
Besides everything else, where's the list to get my name on the list?
Well, there was a paper outside. What was your name? I called your name earlier. All right, let me look through and I'll grab it. Paul, do you want to do the?
If there's anybody online right now who'd like to speak, please unmute yourself and identify yourself before you speak. This is her time for public comment. Is anyone online wishing to speak in public comment? Mr. Royce?
Thank you, sir. If we can't pay for the fire department, why are we paying for a parking garage? What, two months ago, I was up here and I said, "Hey, $300 is too much." I think it was 125. I was happy, right? But it's a story. It's not just one event, it's a multitude of events, okay? For the fire department, people knew at the city that they were paying the fees using emergency funds for COVID, but they decided to pay for other funds anyway, for other projects anyway. We knew that we could not provide essential services to city residents, that we could not afford them, but we're paying for everything else. This is the something else. There's this newspaper article, mayor, it says, "Mayor Tells Citizens We Do Care." I've seen your passion. I know you're passionate. I've seen passion about affordable housing. There's passion at this table. But this is a newspaper headline about, "Hey, we do care," but the subtext is, "Do we actually?" Because the story continues. Hey, we need to pay, we need to cash out the city because we're overdrawn. Now, the city is not a business, is not for profit. You're to provide services, but we can't pay for the fire department. Why are we paying for this? It's just not, let's see, how do I say this? It's not fair to cherry pick this argument, but it's also not fair to ask the citizens in six months to cash out the city again when we're paying $10 million here, $800,000 there for these sort of projects. That was my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Got Marvin Naps?
Hi. I just have some questions. Can you all answer questions here in this?
We don't usually, we don't.
Normally?
We take the comments.
Okay.
It's not a question and answer session.
I haven't figured out a couple of things. I'm reasonably new here. Been here seven years. How you doing? But this Horizon plan, like I said earlier, and some of your council members can't find the master plan either, but this Horizon plan, has it been used anywhere else? This Horizon program?
This is not a question and answer session.
Okay, yeah, just, I can't find it, and above all, I can't find any success stories. It's a program, right? So I was looking for success stories, and I can't find them. If somebody could post some of that somewhere, I'd be glad to read it. I'd love to read it. And the other questions were, as far as like the tax revenue, my taxes just went up on my house. Okay, but we're talking about pie. You said we're a tier-three city. Are we looking to get promoted? I mean, tier-two, I understand you want to grow, but right now, we can't manage what we got. You're dipping into your reserve funds. Okay, I get it, but this isn't going to add anything to the tax dollars for Salisbury for how long? 20 years? I'm going to be dead. So I'm looking for some benefit for the general population, for me and my neighbors, because right now, my neighbors and I always see is fire sale prices on real estate speculation that doesn't benefit anybody but some $100 million investors from I don't know where. So I'm just curious. I'm looking for answers. I'd love to get them, but it's not adding up. The piece of the pie for Salisbury is not going to get any bigger off of what I see here. The developer's going to get bigger, he hopes, and we're all praying that, you know, maybe things get better, but we know the world doesn't work that way. You're taking a gamble for over the next 20 years on something that might or might not happen. And I'm also kind of curious, didn't we just lose a mayor? Okay, we have, we have Mayor Protem right now? Yes, okay, all right. Should we not wait till we elect somebody? Okay, because we're making, this doesn't pass the smell test in any direction. And the most common comment, I don't know if you guys are reading next door or any other place, but your voters are asking, "What was your cut?" Straight up, it smells bad, and nobody's trusting this deal. So that's all I got to ask, and I'd love to, if somebody can later on, you've got my information, if somebody can later on point me to a win for the Horizon program, or please explain to me like I'm a five-year-old how the tax situation works and Salisbury comes out a winner before I'm dead, I'd love to see it, because I'm not seeing it anywhere here. And ma'am, I like you. You're awesome. Please keep doing what you're doing. Thank you.
All right, next up, we'll take comments from the administration.
Would it be possible to comment briefly on the first hearing point?
Mr. Taylor, you've already commented.
I know, but could I comment on that?
Mr. Taylor, you've already made your comment.
I'll send you examples.
Sure. Thank you.
I would love to. I would have done.
Mr. Kitzro.
Yeah, I said a lot tonight. Apparently, a lot of people weren't listening to what I was saying. We do need some economics development one-on-one classes. We'll work on those. Just a couple of things real quick. When you have a $1.8 million property that is collecting zero tax revenue, it's not worth $1.8 million, there's worth the value that someone will pay for it. So we sold it for $250,000 to have a return of $70 million and 200 jobs. I would say that is a win for the City of Salisbury. Success story for the Horizon. I asked you to go outside and look at the 14-story tall building that apparently you do not see since you've been here. That is a win. How do you pay for a fire department versus the public parking? I guess we were not listening when we say it's non-taxable bonds paid for by the user. The fire department is not paid for by the user in that same capacity. Please pay attention to what other people are saying when you come to these meetings. If I have to sit here and listen, you should listen. If I have to sit here and listen, you should listen too, that's all I have to say.
Well, we're, we're in, we're council comments, so I'll start with Chris Jackson.
Well, first of all, I didn't appreciate Mr. Sullivan calling me out in this, in the meeting. First of all, I don't know why he did it, and he signified me as being the one who did second it, but I do have the right to rescind whatever I voted on, I can say no, nay, or anything I want to, so I really didn't appreciate you doing it because that was very disrespectful, because you didn't call anybody else out on this council, and it's evident because you knew how, you know how they're going to vote. But it doesn't matter to me, I'm going to stand my ground, I stand firm on what I believe, and I'm not changing my mind. So if you thought for one minute that you did something to waver me any kind of way, I'm sorry, I'm not that one. So I would like to say to the city of Salisbury, everyone who has come and has spoke their piece, whether it was whether I liked it or not, I appreciate you coming because your voice does matter here. You are the ones that we want to hear from, because we need to hear from you, because we, other than that, will never know how any of you feel if you don't speak out. So you have that right, and I have that right to vote however I want to, when I want to. Thank you.
Good evening, President Bota, and, um, basically, I, there's a couple of different things, I think we're all getting lost in the applesauce in many ways. A couple, a couple things, realize that the council has approved this, not just this council, but prior councils, well before I even got on the council, well before, actually, before we even got on it. So a lot of this has, and it has been publicized, it has been out there, it's on the agendas, and I'm, and in balancing the information as far as like, oh, we didn't know, you guys are, are, whatever, getting your cut, or, there was, the only person, the only two things I'm involved with are my Mr. Bailey and Ms. Bella, they're my puppy shih-tzus. I don't even know these people personally. I'm like, any kickback, kick forward, kick whatever. But realize, the council over a decade or so has approved this, so where you have been as we were approving this, I don't know. I don't know where you've been, including when I've been on the council, and we have talked about it, and we have all agreed to it. We said we want development, the city put out this to developers, they, we told them to come to us, they gave us a plan. We talked about it, we had slide shows, they came and showed us slide shows, they gave us good ideas, we talked about how we're going to pay for things, not one person showed up and said no, not one person, not one, not one email, not one nasty comment, not that, nothing, not that you're a crook, nothing, nobody said nothing. Now, having said that, be mindful that this is passed, this, this program and this project is legally passed as saying, "We can't do it." These have been signed, there are deeds issued, there, there, there's, you, it gets to a point where there's a, things are binding, legally binding. Now, I don't think it's a waste of time, I think what we need to do is going, going forward, because that's all we can do, I can't worry about even three minutes ago, two minutes ago, two seconds ago. What we can do is if, if we got concerns with parking, we need to do revisiting, parking downtown, more education, more understanding, figuring out how, whatever it is with parking. They still have planning process, there's a time between we say yes, or this resolution, there's a time to actually get to put the shovel in it. There's a lot of comment, a lot of things that can, that should be worked in and around it, but they're in a legally binding contract at this point. So to balance, to balance everybody's upsetment and uproar tonight and the prior night and the last two weeks, to what has been going on for a decade, it's, it's very hard, there, I mean, what, what, other than us doing what? There's nothing that we're going to, um, do with that unless we revisit the plan as it comes in. I, I just don't know what the public really want, it's confusing. To us council people, it's confusing. Basically, the public has given us a rideaway, listening to all the information and everybody's objection, and taking everything into account. The public has never said no, ever, and the councils have always said yes, because not one person has said no.
So I know that we had a call for a success story, and this is going to be news to Mr.
Simpson here, um, and the fact that apparently we're in bed, but my daughter's still going to be paying Mr. Simpson rent come two months from now. So thankfully, because of the Ross, she's going to be able to move out into her first apartment ever. She graduated from SU last year, she's working in Somerset County, contributing to our community, and will be living in her own apartment in two months' time. I'm incredibly proud of her and all the hard work and savings that she has done, and I am really, truly appalled that we're being accused of some sort of cronyism. Is my daughter going to get a free apartment? No, no, sir, no, she is not. She's going to pay her way just like all of us have. And let me tell you something, I am incredibly proud of the work that's been going on downtown, I won a second at everything that Councilwoman Blake has said. And on a different note, let's change tracks here, Juneteenth celebration was amazing this weekend, more, another, another success story for downtown, it was bigger than it has been every year prior, it gets bigger and bigger, huge crowd, huge turnout for the parade, it was amazing, I feel bad that I wasn't able to actually walk and talk to people along the parade route, but, you know, me with my graceful self, I'm laid up a little bit, so I had to ride my scooter. But, you know, it was an amazing, amazing event, and I know we're going to have another one this weekend with Pride, I'm, I'm extremely excited to be a part of that parade as well. These events are huge economic boosts for our businesses downtown and speaking to the downtown businesses, they're all excited with the direction that I've spoken to, they're excited with the direction that we're, we're headed. So with that, I'm done.
Ms. Alton?
I always start off every comment thanking you all, I know that it's been a long evening, so thank you all for providing input, we do, really do appreciate it. Regardless of the outcome of votes, it is vital that we have your feedback, and as has been reiterated by some of our fellow council members, continue that feedback, don't let this be a one-off engagement, please continue showing up, because we want that feedback continuously throughout the rest of the year. I'll say this, I have a couple notes I've been making as people have been providing comment, you know, Salisbury is at a pivotal moment, we're not the only municipality to be facing this, our entire nation is facing a housing crisis, point blank, and contrary to what Mr. Taylor previously mentioned, New York Times just actually released a study mentioning that Salisbury was one of the top 10 to see a huge influx in remote workers here in the region. So just to emphasize that, we are seeing flow here into the city of Salisbury.
Like the New York Times.
Sir, I really would appreciate just some decency, thank you.
I am really disappointed with some folks in this group here who have been so disrespectful to other people when they were given all the respect in the world. I'm just ashamed.
I apologize, I'm feeling a little overheated, as you guys can tell, it's a bit hot in here. Um, I'll just say this, and I'll provide a personal anecdote, this is a personal issue for me, I'm a renter myself, um, these housing projects are, to me, a great opportunity for the community, I've mentioned this throughout my entire time on the council, we have got to find ways to support our residents, and to me, that starts with housing, we need more housing opportunities, affordability or not, we need more housing. Three years ago, I got out of a relationship and I was looking for housing here in the area, and unfortunately, I couldn't find any on such short notice. I waited seven months before I was able to hear back from a property owner who was able to take me in, um, seven months, and I have the luxury of seeing from the area, I have family that I can rely on. However, we don't, not everyone has that privilege, not everyone has that opportunity to be able to lean on family in those tough times, and I would have appreciated this type of housing as a young professional moving into the area. We talk about how these projects aren't just going to benefit, what communities these projects are going to benefit, and, and I do hear a lot of the concerns coming from this, this room. However, a, a community that doesn't get to come out too much are the young professionals that will benefit from this. We are, we have three phenomenal institutions here, Salisbury University, UMS, Warwick Community College, we're cultivating so much amazing talent at these higher education facilities, and when they graduate, there is no housing to keep them here, and they move off to brighter places, and I want that brighter place to be Salisbury, and I really do believe that this housing opportunity, that the work that this council, that this administration and the developers are only ever working to benefit this community, and something I think we can all agree in, comments, whether we agree on viewpoints or not, we all are here tonight because we want to see our community thrive. So those are my remarks.
Thank you. The only thing that I will add is, from the first time that I ran for city council, housing was one of the main things that I spoke about, and was one of the main issues that has always driven me, and I have, from day one, it's always been about beds and heads when we talk about downtown revitalization, it's always been about changing policies such as parking maximums, or parking minimums to parking maximums, which you end up with us building a mall with a parking lot that's built for Black Friday and Christmas. And you end up with what you get with parking lots like that. Density is critical in an area, it will be positive for local businesses, and I, I have always been supportive of this, this is not because I'm in bed with someone, the only person I'm in bed with is my wife, and if anybody wants to say otherwise, come say it to me face to face. I mean, you know, and that's all I have to say about that. I do want to remind everybody, because Angela and Jack both forgot, if you're healthy enough, please give blood, there is a shortage, and I encourage everybody to come out this weekend for the Pride Festival and Parade. Next, so the work session is adjourned, and we will move into our special meeting, at this time, I will call that meeting to order, and I will entertain a motion in a second to adopt the special meeting agenda. All those in favor of approving the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. At this time, we entertain a motion in a second to approve resolution number 3263.
Second.
Mrs. Miller?
I'm going to read it.
Okay.
Resolution number 3263, resolution of the city council of the city of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to sign the amended and restated land disposition agreement for lots one, 11, and 15, to set the terms for the sale and construction of said lots, whereas the city is the owner of all that certain real property identified as map 0107, parcel 1071, lot one, lot 1079, lot 11, and map 0107, parcel 1066, lot 15, whereas by the majority vote of the council of the city of Salisbury, at the October 20, 2002 regular meeting, the city council of the city declared lot one and 11 to be surplus property, whereas on or about October 30, 2015, the city entered into disposition contract for the sale of parking lots one and 11, and whereas by the majority vote of the city council at the November 22, 2021 regular meeting, the city council of the city declared lot 15 to be surplus property, whereas the city desires to sell to Salisbury Town Center Apartments LLC, and developer desires to purchase from the city lots one, 11, and 15 for the express purpose of the developer's development, construction thereon, whereas pursuant to 16-8 et cetera of Salisbury City Charter in Chapter 2.3 of the Salisbury City Code, the city has the right to offer at public sale property declared surplus and to make award thereof in the best interest of the city, whereas city-owned surplus property shall be developed not only in consideration of the highest bid price, but in consideration of the type of development proposed, and such development should require commitment from the purchaser to develop as such city-owned surplus property in a manner that will raise the city's tax base and be in the best interest of the citizens of the city, whereas in accordance with their foregoing, the city determined it to be in the best interest of the citizens of the city to sell and lease the surplus property defined here and above as lot one, lot 11, and lot 15, whereas for various reasons, including the global COVID-19 pandemic, the developer's purchase, lease, and redevelopment of lot one, lot 11, and lot 15 has been delayed, and the developer has agreed to amend it, to amend the original LDA in its entirety as more particularly set forth in the amended and restated land disposition agreement attached hereto incorporated herein as exhibit one, to provide the rights and obligations of the city and developer with respect to the following, developer's purchase of such portion of lot one, lot 11, lot 15 as described in the amended LDA, the construction of the parking, excuse me, public parking garage and the connection with the development of the Salisbury Town Center project in accordance with terms contained in the amended LDA, number three, adding to the purchase and development of lot 15, and number four, such other matters relating to developer's purchase and development of the Salisbury Town Center lots, subject to all terms and conditions contained in the amended LDA, and whereas the specific provisions regarding the construction on lots one, 11, and 15, as well as the construction of parking garages are specified in the amended and restated LDA, excuse me, restated land disposition agreement attached hereto as exhibit one, and whereas by the resolution the council hereby approves the funding agreement attached hereto as exhibit one, now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, as follows, section one, the mayor of the city of Salisbury is hereby authorized to execute the amended and restated land disposition agreement attached hereto incorporated herein as exhibit one, section two, is intention of the mayor and the council of the city of Salisbury that each provision of this resolution shall be deemed independent of all other provisions herein, section three, it is the further intention of the mayor and the council of the city of Salisbury that if any section, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision of the resolution shall be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional, and otherwise unenforceable under applicable Maryland or federal law, such adjudication shall apply only to the section's paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision, so adjudication of all other provisions of the resolution shall remain and shall be deemed valid and enforceable, section four, the recitals set forth here and above in exhibit one attached hereto are incorporated into this section of the resolution, as if such recitals in exhibit one were specifically set forth at length in this section four. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the council? Call for the question, all those in favor of approving resolution number 3263, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Uh, me.
No, then the chair votes aye, motion passes 4 to 1. No other business on the agenda, we are adjourned for the evening.